Thank you. I would now entertain a motion from one of our school board members to approve our proposed agenda.
A move that we approve the proposed agenda.
Second?
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. Great, thank you. And again, I'd like to just welcome everybody and if if you don't mind, Mayor, we've got a great turnout of staff and I know we have some new school board members, which are really excited to have at the table with us tonight. But for the sake, I'll just say of myself, would you mind just quickly kind of interviewing some of your staff and the department leads that are here with us tonight?
Yes, I'll have them kind of raise their hand when I introduce them. Jay Shorn is our city attorney and over here we have Garland Williams. He's the director of transportation. Ryan, I'm sorry, your last name? Anthony is assistant director of Parks and Recreation. Mike Goodett with Public Works. And Chrissy Helmo with budget.
The important stuff, all of it.
And Sam Saunders with the city manager.
Thank you all. Thank you so much for joining us. And now I guess I'll turn it over to Dr. Gurley.
We will. We are going to jump into our items for discussion. And first up, we have item 4.1, which is our Charlottesville Albemarle Technical Education Center update with Kim Powell. Are you all fine with her?
Navigating slides.
Maybe if you take this video on the floor.
Okay.
I think that they give everyone a clearer view. There you go.
Definitely on a microphone. Sorry about that. Did everyone hear what they needed to hear from those first slides? I apologize. I didn't think I was on a mic, but I was kind of enjoying it. Um, sorry. So I'm going to step through what a year, what this process looks like as a rolling process moving forward with Albemarle. They make well, the start of course was a little different, but in November, and it actually was early December, they declared for us the total number of slots that they want for K-Tech for next school year because we need that for our budgeting purposes. And that's going to be the case every year. They did not significantly change their participation at this point. There is one program that's an EMT program. That was already half day at K-Tech and half day out at Western Albemarle. And they are choosing to take that person in that program. And this was in alignment with that person's desires. And they're going to offer that program at Western or Western and Monticello. And so there's a dip that is attributed really only to that perhaps. But essentially their planned participation is the same. When we, the way to read this chart is 2425, there are multiple steps each year as we approach a new school year. So for 2425, they declare the total number of slots they are going to take in November, December. We need that number for our budgeting. By April, which this aligns with when high schoolers are kind of doing their course selection. In April, after spring break, they take that total number of slots and they change that to slots by program. And at that point, if they decide to reduce their total number of slots, they can do so, but they only get a like a 50, they get a 50% credit at that point, credit towards future enrollments. Because there was a lot of nervousness about when they needed to commit and how they would predict what they needed. And so this idea of a rolling process with two check-ins per year gives them an op, gives them an opportunity to adjust their numbers and receive credit. And when they're making an adjustment in April, that is giving us an opportunity to offer those slots to use, use more slots for our own students, but also for other outside entities who have expressed interest in sending students to K-Tech such as home schools, private schools, other public school systems. So then we move into October and around that time we work with our finance team. And on the next slide, I'll show you the methodology we're using to set the tuition rate each year. But we inform them of the tuition rate for the next year in October. And then they have a window between October and December if they want to revise the total slot number for the next year. Sorry, I just got it. This does actually goes better when I point. Sorry, this is probably. But anyway, you see, it's just, it's basically a rolling process with two check-in points each year. They move from having a total slot number, which we use for budgeting to a slots by program number that is ultimately what they're invoiced for in the fall. So you can go to the next slide. So the tuition is a fairly simple formula. We take the prior year's total actual costs to operate the high school program. We take essentially the cost of ownership and we take those out. That's utilities, which we would pay pretty much whether they're there or not. Contracted maintenance services and the different insurances that are related to property and so forth. Again, cost of ownership. We take out the prior year's actual state and federal revenues that were received for K-Tech. And then we start to do some adds because any, in any school, your most expensive thing is your people. And so we can't really be looking in the rearview mirror on what the people cost when we set tuition. So we will, we then add a percentage increase for salaries based on the prior three-year average budgeted increase. And then we apply the then current VRS rate to the projected salaries unless the VRS Board of Trustees in October is recommending a rate increase. And then we're going to go ahead and apply the rate increase if, if one is being recommended. That's not the case this year. And then last but not least, similar to the salaries, we add a percentage increase for health insurance, again, based on prior three-year average budgeted increase. And then that result is a total dollar value, which we divide by 400 slots, which is the number that we agreed is a reasonable number to represent the total availability of slots. And that is how we arrive at a tuition cost per slot. For the 2425 school year, it is $7,743. And ACPS reserved 254 slots. So they'll be contributing over 1.9 million to operation. It's, it's not out of line with, again, the participation that they've had. Next slide. So items in progress and next steps, we're working on a partnership with Virginia Career Works that we're very excited about to continue to, you know, increase work-based learning and making, making sure that our workforce readiness skills are, you know, top of, top of the game, so to speak. And that we're aligned with the local needs of industries with what we're doing with our CTE programming and K-Tech Advisory, which also we want to be heavily partnered with Virginia Career Works and leadership there in advising K-Tech moving forward. K-Tech, you know, had a joint governance board doing that before. There was a foundation that's no longer dedicated just to K-Tech. We feel like this advisory is something we're really excited about getting together and getting it underway. And then data and telecommunications transition. Currently, the infrastructure that provides the internet and telecom is part of Albemarle County's account, if you will. And so untangling that isn't as simple as switching the meter, you know, who, where the meter bill goes for like your electricity. It's a little more complex than that. But Pat Cuomo and his team have done a great job. They have assurances from Bright Speed, Bright Speed that they will actually have that untangled and that, that racetrack will be just billed to us. And I think that's going to happen well before June at this point. And then our ultimate plan, and this was put into motion as soon as we decided to acquire K-Tech, is it's going to, it's part of, it's become part of our private fiber network project, which is underway with WANREC. We were hoping that whole thing would be done by July 1st, but we weren't counting on that. That's why Bright Speed is, that change is what we're going with there. And even as a backup to that, we did have some agreement in place with Albemarle in, in the event that we needed to continue to get the service through them. We had it set as to what the billing would look like coming to us. That was kind of Plan C, but I'm fairly confident Bright Speed will be in place well ahead of time. So that's, that's been a good thing to get ironed out. Last but not least is new signage and branding. It's still K-Tech. But it, instead of Charlottesville Albemarle Technical Education Center, it, we're going to change the, the name, the underneath the K-Tech, if you will, to Charlottesville Area Technical Education Center to reflect our commitment to continue serving the area. And so that'll be something that we tackle in the next six months or so. And is that the last one? I think it is. Yeah. So happy to answer questions.
Yeah. So I had one just to start off with, when you were talking about the getting information from Albemarle and, and the schedule. So when and how is the schedule set? Because I think it was some concern that, you know, the county students would kind of drive that because of their, their numbers.
Right. So it, the, of, I am going to go and point them. Sorry, I'm a pointer when it comes to. I will give it a, this scares me, Pat, but okay, here we go. Pat, if you'll go to that slide, it's not so bad with the blue and yellow. Okay. So they declare a total number of slots. Then this is for the 2425 school year. This April of 2024, they have to take that total number of slots and convert it to slots by program. At that point, if they back off of that total number of slots at all, they're getting, we will give a credit, I think it's 50% credit, but it's, it's a credit. It's not like a refund because, because of what you're saying, like we're, our budget's locked in at that point. And you may recall, I think it was April of this past year, there was a visual I shared. It was a, like a drop of water going in with smooth ripples. I mean, that's what we want for both sides. We don't want to make any changes that are ever highly disruptive to their operations. But we also can't put ourselves in a position where they could make changes that could be really disruptive to our budget or our operations. So this actually, I think, we think both sides agree accomplishes that and also recognizes the fact that none of us have any crystal balls. So anyway. For 24, at the same time in April of 2024, when they're taking that original total slots and breaking it into slots, slots by program, they're going to go ahead and tell us for 2526, their total slot number that they want to reserve. So those two things are happening at the same time. Then you go into the fall and there's what we call a settlement period. We're going to take the actual fall official enrollment numbers. And we will do a settlement based on the numbers that actually came to use the slots that they reserved. And then that we will allow a 25% credit for, if, for any unfilled slots at that point, because at that point it's hard for us to use those slots or we, you know, offer those to other entities. At that, around that same time, we're telling them the price tag because we would have done the new math. We've closed out the prior fiscal year. So we have all those actual numbers. And we can run the calculations to set the tuition for 2526. Then they have an adjustment period where if they want to change that total, again, that's way in advance, we could, we would allow the 50% credit if they, if they make a change from their original number. That's in April. I apologize. No, that's December. Sorry. Then we go back into April, slots by program. What's your next total? We go into the fall settlement, next tuition setting and so forth, and it continues from there. I don't know if that was helpful for you, but being able to point while I talk was super helpful for me.
So I'm, I'm really excited that you're working with Sir Morton. They, we have to serve on some of the, her committees as counselors and I represent it and they really have a good pulse on what's going on as far as the needs of the employers and things in the community and training and grants and things like that that's out there. So is, I'm glad that you're doing that. So are there other counselors that have questions?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you for the work you've done on this. I had some real concerns back in the spring and you all have done just an excellent job pulling this off. So kudos to you. Thank you. I really appreciate it and I really am grateful for this, what I'm seeing about the involvement for CTE. It sounds like that is moving forward. K-Tech Advisory, I'd be interested to know and how that's, how that's put together and who's on that and I realize the schools portion of this is essential, but keeping an eye on the CTE component is, is really important as well. So anyway, kudos to you and your team for, for pulling this off.
Any?
One question. I know I've seen members of the Albemarle School Board discuss the construction of a center two, which they've said would pull Albemarle students out of K-Tech and into the center two. Is that something that Albemarle has, has discussed as part of this at all in terms of even possible intention of constructing that and what that timeline may be?
I know it. Excuse me. So at a very high level, Dr. Haas and I've had conversations about what the implications of center two will be. And so one of the things that, excuse me, one of the things we've talked about are the replication of programs. And so one thing that they've stated, and I know things are subject to change, things are fluid. But they don't have any intentions of replicating programs. And I think some of that is about capacity right now. And I think what Ms. Powell shared is that we've had a really good, I mean, this whole transition period, us working collaboratively with them to get to here. I mean, I think it's been very smooth, both councils, both legal councils. And I think what they overall, the sense that we've gotten from them is that this will continue to be an asset from them, for them. And so pulling students from K-Tech will only mean that they will need to find somewhere for those students to go. And it takes space for serving students elsewhere within their county. So I think, could that happen down the road? You know, yes, but I think what we've heard from them is that right now there's no intention to do that because K-Tech can continue to serve them well.
One thing I was interested to learn in the transition is K-Tech has, as part of someone's role who's there, that they do marketing. You know, K-Tech has marketing. You'll see their ads on television and things like that. We have no intention of pulling that back because we want the community, the area to know we're there. And even if, because we also recognize that Albemarle could have every intention of thinking they're going to fill these slots. But when it comes to the actual course selections that the students do each spring at the high school level, no one is controlling that. So, you know, we want people to know these opportunities that are there. We need to be serving the area employers to make sure we have a pipeline of skilled, you know, folks ready to go into the jobs that are, that need to be filled. But we're going to keep K-Tech out there is, is the point. And the principal at K-Tech has received inquiries from private schools, from other counties, other than the ones we even already work with, like Savannah. People who do homeschooling, you know, there are lots of different folks who, who see these opportunities for the great opportunities that they are. And we're just excited to be able to, to serve in that role for the area.
And the only other question is thinking about kind of the future of the site. Is there any kind of ballpark sense yet in terms of if there would be any CIP requests that would be necessary or what fiscal years it would, those would come in at for the city?
So fun fact, the CIP for K-Tech is already managed by the city. Earlier when I was talking about different administration, administrative, you know, pieces have been handled by the different partners and one that Mike Goddard and his team have been managing the roof replacements and the BAS upgrades and all of that for years. So the good news is we didn't, you didn't acquire this asset without knowing a lot about its condition. There's not any like big capital maintenance items hanging over our heads. If that's the question, I mean, the city's gained a great asset. What happens with it in the future as far as programming or whatever?
Yeah, I'm thinking more like proactive future investments about expanding programming or services on site.
That's where I think the advisory will be key in that. And that, that's why we want an advisory bringing that to you all because it's, it's bigger than just high school education really. And so, yeah, we, I, I wouldn't put any boundaries on that, but I can't say we've gotten that far. And that'll be something I think advisory will be key in determining.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. I just, sorry, I was a little bit late. So you might've gone over this already, but I just have a definitional question. For slots, that's not the student, but it's the place in the class.
It's reserving a, a place in the class. That's exactly right.
Student could take a couple of slots if they sign up for more than one class.
Scheduling wise, that's super hard because of the way it's blocked. And so it's, it's very hard for a student to participate in multiple CTE programs. I don't know that anyone can. Yeah, I don't think you can go to multi, but it's, it's slot is for the program. So they're, they're reserving program slots and then they put the specific students into the slots.
Okay, great. And I see here the slot reservation from Albemarle. How many are there approximately total?
400 is what we are basing the budget for. And that was something Albemarle agreed on. Understand that it, like in any of our schools, we could press things and maybe get up over 400. Right now, we don't have 400 students at K-Tech, but that, we all agreed that was a round number that kind of in the middle of the maximum that it could support and kind of where we're operating, where we've been operating for the past several years or more.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
All right. And before we move on, I failed to introduce school staff. We have several school staff here and I want to make sure that the city council members know who's present. You met Kim Powell. You have Pat Cuomo, who is our Director of Technology over in the corner. And then behind me, we have Carolyn Swift, who is our Director of Assessment and Accountability. And seated next to her is Rachel Raznick, our Director of Student Services. Seated beside her is Dr. Katina Ode, our Chief Academic Officer. We have Renee Hoover, our Finance Director. And then on the end, we have Ms. Lewis, who is our HR Director. And then all the way in the far corner, Bev Chuck, our Supervisor for Communications. And and then we have Julia Green, our Clerk, and then our Deputy Clerk, we have Leslie Becker. Leslie Becker. So next on our agenda, we have 4.2, we have Mr. Trotter, who will introduce you to our night school program.
Good evening. My name is Lamont Trotter, Program Administrator at LMA, Lugo McGinnis, our Night School Program outline. Next slide, please. So the first slide outlines the strategic plan and the priority of how night school is aligned with the two targets as well as the two strategies. And so the first target outlines of how we will address the graduation rate as well as how with target two, we will equip our students for post-secondary plans. And so with those two particular targets, what we want to make sure that we're doing at night school is addressing those students that have those academic deficits and/or successes via through classes and/or needing to complete particular SOL assessments. If we look at strategy one, we are talking and outlining, thank you. We are talking and outlining the rigor and wellness within the school counseling department. Ms. Phelps, our School Counselor, does a phenomenal job welcoming our young people into the night school program and making sure that those particular students courses are aligned with what course those students have taken at CHS as well as ensuring that those grades and, and other measures are added as well. And then for strategy two, equally again with Ms. Phelps, our School Counselor, we're looking at that personalized learning plan and/or career plans. We really want to highlight our incoming ninth graders because many of our students in ninth grade or, excuse me, in night school are either ninth or 10th grade. So we want to begin to look at how we can find out exactly what those post-career plans are potentially as well as still aligning and having those conversations with the School Counselor at the high school. Next slide, please. So here you will just see the overall presentation of what I will outline as it relates to our night school program. Next slide, please. So this slide basically outlines what is night school all about. And so the particular opportunity is for our students to come to receive a much smaller setting. As we completed the orientations with our students and our parents, one of the things that we found out was many of them, our students wanted a smaller academic setting so that they, one, their voices can be heard and feeling a little bit more comfortable in that academic setting where they can either work individually or collectively as a group. Secondly, the change of setting and making it conducive to learning. One thing that we have found out from, I would say about two of our students is they employ night school because it gives them now that sense of family comfort that they kind of may have lacked going into the high school, being an incoming freshman. And I highlight that because many of our young people coming into night school are our freshman students that we're trying to support so that when they do transition back to the high school, that they will have those necessary two tools, excuse me, for success. Then we look at the reduce of the dropout rates. And so ultimately, like stated previously, the ultimate goal is to make sure that if we do have students that are underaged and overcredited, that we're looking at how we best want to support them as well as those students that are possibly credit deficient. And how do we provide those particular testing tools and strategies for that? And so we have a phenomenal staff that I'll speak to more on how that looks. And then that target support for those students at risk. How does our night school program address those at-risk students? And it's very simple. One, we love on them when they come in the door. And that is even when we are conducting our orientations to reassure our parents that yes, it is night school. It is a different environment, but the ultimate goal is for your child to, one, be successful and possibly find the support for their child. If it's not in our campus, how do we find that? One additional point as Ms. Kim Powell outlined, we are equally building out how we support our parents as well. The ultimate goal eventually is to have our parents work in our gym where our students are working in their classrooms collaboratively because we're possibly having parents that still want to seek out getting their GED or other measures like that. Next slide, please. Who are our students? These are students that are not meeting success in the comprehensive setting. These are young people that I dare to say may have caused minor turbulence, but just needed a smaller environment. So these are students that we are supporting through either dropping out or needing just additional support. Equally, these are students, as mentioned before, that are possibly credit deficient as it relates to being overage and undercredited. So we look at how we are mirroring and finding those tools for them to receive those credit opportunities. Next, we look at those students that have personalized learning plans. And those are our young people that possibly have an individual education plan. And so we do have an exceptional education teacher that works in tandem with our general education teacher, pulling those young people out to receive those particular exceptional education services that are. To receive those particular exceptional education services that are aligned with their education plan. And then finally, how are we supporting those particular students during night school? At the end of each night, we have what we call kind of family meeting townhouse. And so we have conversations with our young people, not only about what's going on either in the community that they care to share, but also experiences with us. One story that comes to mind very quickly is we were all talking around the table at dinner and a young man said, did you all want to be educators? And everyone shook their head no. And so we then began to share our experiences of why we became educators and the importance of that. Next slide, please. So as you can see that we launched our Night School Program on November twenty seventh. And so it's at our Lugo McGinnis Academy location, and there you see the particular time. I am super excited to announce that we had the opportunity to work with our Communication Department with one of our communication agencies. That came out to do a story on us. It's super excited to highlight that of the fourteen young people that we have enrolled. That ten of those students are at night school tonight after the storm. So I'm super excited about how we are garnering the message of how we are one branding night school. As well as the parents and the safety that they have instilled with us with their young people. Next slide. So here you have the outline of our night school staff, and so you have Ms. Charmaine Williams and Ms. Eloise Phelps, our School Counselor. Mr. Dominique Williams, our Parent Engagement Officer, Mr. Joseph Patterson, one of our facilitators and Algebra One Teacher. Mr. Grady, our Math Facilitator, Holly Faulkner, our Exceptional Education Educator. And then we have our facilitator, Ms. Latoya Brown. And so these are staff members that are within our division that work all day and then they come over either from Beaufort or from the high school. And so they come energetic after working with our young people during the day and give that same tenacity to our young people at night. One of the things that I would like to highlight with our parent engagement that we are doing is we are in the process of launching either in-person. Or a virtual bingo night, and that might sound minor, but the goal and ultimate opportunity is for our parents, one, to win various tickets. To the John Paul Jones Valentine's Night Concert. So we're really just trying to get our parents' voices, one, heard, as well as to hear exactly how their children are speaking about night school. Next slide, please. So here are some of the resources that we have began to launch at night school. And so we are in progress, working with Career Works with Sarah Morton as well and her team. As well as our K U, where students have the opportunity to have internships and potential jobs. I'd like to just park there for a second because the students that attend night school, many of them do have jobs. And so they actually leave night school and then they go to work. And familiar with about two students that do that. And so we're super excited about continuously garnering additional opportunities for our young people. We will be launching a Hulu partnership with Mr. Greg on tomorrow. And so that gives the students the opportunity when they first arrive to have downtime and or talk about particular conflicts. And or go searching opportunities. We are in the process still of working with our Rise Above Partners to have that launch. And I am excited about our D B T skills that deals more with about trauma and mindfulness moments. And and appear again, mediations that will be launching with Ms. Phelps. One of the representatives for this program was on campus today, meeting with our students, Mr. West. So we will be launching that on Mondays and on Mondays and Wednesdays. Students have the opportunity to receive, I believe it's a P E credit for that. So many of these opportunities allow our students either a credit and or exposure and opportunities. Next slide, please. So what does the instruction look like at night school? There's the face-to-face direct instruction that our young people receive, as well as the Edgenuity Platform. In addition to the direct instruction, we are moving heavily to the project-based format. And why we're leaning towards that is because we want to hear what the students have garnered from what the teacher has taught. It's not just a sit and get a lecture for two hours. Our young people are here at night, and so we want to make sure that it is an engaging opportunity, but it's also project-based. And so we also use the Edgenuity Platform, which is an online platform. Where students have the opportunity to do, complete various modules and particular contented areas. And before they move to the next, there is an assessment in a particular percentage of pass rate that they perceive. And then, as mentioned before, the Office of Exceptional Education works with our young people as it relates to the individual education plan that they have. Meeting those goals and objectives and or particular services that are needed. Next slide, please. And so students have the opportunity to, if they're in the walking zone, to walk into our campus. And those students kind of in that hardy drive area. And then we also have our activity bus that picks our young people up at the end of the night. Mr. Williams and I are very instrumental in providing transportation when we have a, because we do have a school car. So as we share with our parents how the students are transported, that's one of the major questions. It's night school. How are they getting home? How are they getting to school? And I'll just lean on today with us having ten, about nine of those kids needed rides. And so we were crisscrossing, making sure that those young people are where they needed to be, getting to school, and we utilize the activity bus in the evening. Next slide, please. So what now? We continue to onboard students. We just completed phase two of the students that are enrolling for night school. With the support of Dr. Odie and the team of how students are placed at night school. So we continue to support those young people. We do have a group of, not a group, but maybe about two or three that we're still working on with orientations to find out exactly where they are. Again, it's also sort of a selling point to explain to our parents why night school is important and the opportunity that those young people can benefit from. We're equally monitoring the progress of our students and we're start, excuse me, we're first starting with our ninth graders. Because we want to make sure that the courses that they're in, coming from the high school, as well as that S O L are aligned. So that when it comes time for remediation measures and things like that, we're able to make sure that there is an alignment with that as well. And then the expansion opportunities, like I mentioned before, as we continue to grow, location, location, location. And so we work closely with the Superintendent and the Division as it relates to expansion opportunities. Next slide, please. I will be happy to take any questions if there are any.
One question I have, what do what do you expect the kids to be doing during the day?
Yes.
Four, three, forty-five.
Absolutely. And so one thing that we are working to do is that's where we saw the K U program. And so the opportunity is for those young people to hopefully land internships. And so that is one of the processes that we are working on. The night school team also is looking at some asynchronous learning opportunities for those young people to be able to complete assignments. But ultimately, sir, it's us trying to connect those young people that are not employed with job opportunities.
So what is an asynchronous learning opportunity?
What is an asynchronous learning opportunity?
Whatever that phrase was you just used.
Yep. So it would be us providing the student possibly with some kind of assignment or particular project. For example, we have a young man that may possibly graduate with an applied studies because he has an individual education plan. And so what we want to do is align this particular young man with his I E P goals. And one, if it is him having a job, then it's him, this particular young man working during the day. The night school staff then goes and meets with his employer to see how, one, he's engaging with the community. How is he coming to this, coming to work on time? So that's just one particular example of what we want to do outside of the confinement of the academic day.
I guess I was, I'm not familiar with a lot of the educational terminology.
Yes, sir.
Asynchronous seems like a word that I don't understand how that fits in with what else you're doing.
Yep. So so it it allows the students, and forgive me, I hope I'm answering it correctly. Allows the students to work individually on a particular assignment or project outside of the academic day is more so what that looks like.
So Mr. Mr. Snook, an example, when the students were out during our COVID period of time. There was a lot of discussion about whether classes would be asynchronous or synchronous. So synchronous in an educational setting would mean with a teacher, an instructor, live, kind of behind the camera.
I got you.
A real time working with them as opposed to asynchronous where they, you can sign up for students, even college students can sign up for online courses. And they're kind of doing it at their own pace. They have their assignments, so they're not necessarily assigned or expected to show up at a certain time. And turn their Zoom camera on, those types of things.
Thank you.
Yep. And I'm not an educator, but my daughter had to figure that out.
Other.
Yeah. Mr. Trotter, thank you so much. This is a very interesting presentation. How many students are actually in the program?
So on, on, excuse me, enrolled, we have fourteen.
Okay.
And so tonight we had ten. And so that is the expectation is for us to have at least thirty.
Okay.
And so with that, as the students are placed or are placed to the night school. The ultimate goal is to have thirty coming from the the Division.
Yeah, it sounds like a really great, I'm thinking about my kids who went through high school. I wish they could have had an opportunity to do something like this. But is the hope at some point to grow it even more? Do you feel like there's the need to like double or triple it at some point or?
I would hope so. I I'm a believer that the academic day may not always be for a particular student. We, students may have particular measures where they need to come to a night school program. I have the example of two of my young ladies at Lugo Day that are new mothers. And this week they actually came in just totally bawling because they were tired, stressed. And so I shared with those young ladies through our School Counselor, you come to night school.
Yeah.
It's not we're lining, we're signing you up, but if you need that space for academic support, come to night school. Now, I would dare to say what I would love to, for night school to equally be for new mothers like that. How do we then get those young babies in while the mother is learning in that academic setting? And so my thought is, how do I partner with the church and get some of those church mothers to come and hold the babies and love on the babies while the child is learning their academics? And so that's ultimately where the vision and hope will be for the support of students in those particular measures.
Yeah, that's really excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pinkston, I I need to ask, sir, have you ever had an opportunity to to tour Lugo McGinnis? So I I'm gonna not be presumptuous here, but Mr. Trotter is wonderful at hosting tours. And I would encourage you all to get over and take a look at that. In specific to your question, there really is a max capacity, whether it's Lugo McGinnis Day School or the Night School of about thirty. And that is really based on space.
Yes.
Square footage constraint. So as you can hear, this is so exciting. I mean, just his vision and the potential for the programs that that we can do to support students. And as he touched on briefly, parents, you know, and and bringing the families in and offering counseling for housing and things like that. I mean, there's so much potential that we are just now tapping into, but we are really limited by space. I mean, the footprint there is over by Venable, and it is just a teeny tiny little space, but we are, you know, it, there's potential. So I mean, I really implore you all who might have a desire and can think outside of the box. To help support our students and our families in in these ways. I mean, this is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity.
Do you, do you have a sense in terms of what you would estimate the demand would be if there wasn't constraints in terms of physical location, staffing constraints? What that number of students you might estimate would be that would participate in the program?
So I I think, Mr. Payne, when you think about the students that we are, some of the students that we are serving in our night school program. We're serving them there because there's, there's not enough space during the daytime. So as Ms. Torres said, the cap during the Lugo Day Program is thirty. And that's really because of the building itself. And so, I mean, right now with the staff that we have, we most certainly could go upwards of, you know. And I think the the student to staff ratio is really, you know, being a former principal in an alternative setting. You know, the key to the success is the student to staff ratio. And so when you think about, we could potentially in the daytime go up to sixty students. But that's with the current staff. But if we wanted to build the innovative future, we could add more staffing. We know, we've talked about things such as like supports for new mothers, substance abuse counseling. All of these types of things just to meet the demands of our students, meet the demands of our community. And so I think you could easily serve sixty students during the daytime and serve sixty students at night. And that's not necessarily that the demand is there, but there are students. Sometimes we have to turn away students who are self-referring because there are some agoraphobia. Or, you know, the comprehensive day school is not the right setting for them. And so I think that that's really unfortunate that we're now in a space where students and the community see the value. But we're having to turn those those families and students away because we're limited by space.
Yeah, I'm curious, because I guess what I'm trying to get at is like, if 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 those resource issues weren't the limitation. Like, how many, how many students have been turned away? If resources weren't an issue, kind of what is the scale of the the number of people that need to be served that can't?
I know that the the waiting list, the waiting list from the high school at one. So when we were working through like, who's, who are students that we've identified to, that we could serve? And and another location and probably serve them even better. At one point, before we began the Night School Program, that waiting list was like thirty-five to forty students. And there still are students that are on that waiting list that, you know, we're trying to be very creative about how we serve them. So I think, and that waiting list is still very long. Mr. Trotter sees that number.
It 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 does grow. One thing I can say is that now, often when I do walk the halls at the high school, and they seem much as that has L M A. Many of them are asking, you know, how do I, I have submitted my application and we're waiting. How long is the waiting list? And so it's those different things like that, I think, that have turned into that positive piece of why L M A and night school. Can equally be as important. Again, our major focus is not only with our students that are causing turbulence in our campuses, but what about that young student that just needs that smaller space? Or have experienced some kind of mental health trauma and may not be able to find themselves around a large crowd anymore. So that's, I hope that answers your question.
I think Ms. Dooley had something.
I think my comment is just, I mean, in our ideal world, if resources weren't a barrier. We would be providing this kind of hyper-specialized programming to a hundred percent of our students. And not just, you know, students that are struggling academically or in the comprehensive setting. But I think that's part of our larger mission of, you know, why we approached you about preserving K Tech, right? And our focus on C T E. And Mr. Pinkston, when you referenced C T E, were you speaking about adult education? And I think that's another like lingo, when we have C T E for students, career and technical education. But certainly the adult aspect is on our minds as well.
Both are, yeah.
Absolutely. So it's hard to answer that question of like, what, what, what are the constraints? Because I think in our ideal world, we would be doing this across the board. And so we're doing this in pockets where we can.
Yeah, well, I think the the waitlist number is is helpful, and that's kind of what I was getting at. The other question is, you mentioned expansion opportunities. Obviously, the physical space was one that was mentioned. Are there other kind of specific things in mind that you're thinking of in terms of what those expansion opportunities would be?
I think, you know, what we are finding is that, and we've been having the conversation about how do we. Address some of the substance abuse issues that we find within our community. And I think that that's an expansion opportunity for us. And so that expansion is also about programming. And so that is a program, that's something that I feel that we can, we can expand upon. Where we can start to dive into serving our students in that manner and also supporting their families. One of the things that Mr. Trotters talked about, we didn't dive very deep into it in this presentation. But with Virginia Career Works, there are opportunities for families to receive resources. And then Ms. Torres mentioned it, if they're looking to do some things with their resume, if they're looking for jobs, if they are interested in being first-time home buyers. So really, expanding upon, we have a very good family engagement program throughout our school division. But we don't really do that aspect. And so this is an opportunity to leverage something different. And to Ms. Dooley's point. And to Ms. Dooley's point, we can do this with this group, but ultimately down the road, this is what every parent, every family should have access to. Uh, you know, but most certainly Bianca Johnson is a team of one and she could not do that with every family in our school division. But we do have an opportunity, um, through our night school program, um, and through our LMA program to offer some of those things so that we can become generational supports, um, for our, uh, community.
And the final question is out of curiosity, in terms of like medium, longer term evaluating, um, what's working most successful? Uh, are there specific metrics you're looking at in terms of impact of the program? Graduation rate, is it test scores? Is it trying to develop metrics of post graduation outcomes or?
Excuse me, absolutely. One, definitely making sure that with, uh, to our division strategic plan. Um, from there, uh, I think it's important that we also look at how we're tracking our young people once they leave night school. Uh, is it that they have the opportunity to transition back to LMA potentially? Or do they have the opportunity to transition back to CHS? And then with that, still following them as a night school staff, but also a strong handoff to that high school administration, making sure that we have paired them if they have a, uh, individual plan with a case manager that is able to pulse check day to day. But even if they, um, aren't a student with a disability, still being able to connect with that school counselor and our parent engagement with the high school parent engagement, um, person to see what supports are needed and continuously be successful. Um, I'm pretty sure that then I would have to share those particular metrics and expectations out to the division as well.
Yeah, so that's how many students, um, how many students successfully transitioned back to the comprehensive setting? One data set that we're using, uh, one thing that they currently, that they've been doing prior to this. Uh, but you know, how many of our students are graduating? Um, some of the students have been placed there, maybe placed at night program uh, because of discipline. So are we reducing the, um, occurrences of disciplinary infractions? Um, so all of these things are things that we can, um, quantitatively communicate, um, to any of our stakeholders to request that information.
Thank you.
Natalie?
Um, Michael kind of touched on my question, uh, or in his question, you kind of touched on it a little bit, uh, because you had mentioned students, um, are goals being to, you know, get them jobs or get them internships. But I was wondering how much of it is also getting them back into the comprehensive setting. Um, and then also, I love the name.
Thank you. Uh, so to, to, um, answer, uh, your first question, um, it, it's kind of a two fold because we, the goal is for them to, uh, for this year, uh, remain at night school. And then we look at how we, um, do the transition back again, either to, uh, LMA or to the high school. Um, while those young people are, um, either seeking employment, making sure that one, that, uh, the administration at night school are following up with those employers to make sure that they're just not out in the street willy nilly, but that's exactly where they are. Knowing that if they are doing frivolous things and not at work, that could be a whole nother measure for us to have to support and or, um, work with, uh, law enforcement. So I hope that answers that, it's kind of sort of, that answers your question.
Yeah, just there's a, there's a focus on the job portion, but there's also a focus on getting them back to.
Absolutely, at one hundred percent, absolutely. Um, because the ultimate goal again is not, is not night school. It's to provide them either through our LMA day or to go back to CHS. Absolutely.
And I think the best way you can look at it is that night school is not a destination, um, that we're talking about a continuum of services. Um, so it can be night school transitioning back to LMA, transitioning back to the walk program, um, which is another, um, form of alternative learning, which is already housed within, um, CHS. Or it could be, um, transitioning back to, um, the high school. And you still have K-Tech as a part of that, uh, continuum of supports and services.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So, um, I just had a couple of comments. First of all, Mr. Trotter, I continue to hear great things about your work and your energy and your passion for, um, this program. So just hear from different people unsolicited. So, um, um, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Um, and as well as I'm in the area a lot because I check in on an elderly, um, person that's in the neighborhood. And so, and she is happy about what's going on there as well.
I enjoy her.
And yes, so, um, and, um, and so, um, as far as space, um, many years ago, and I'm not sure the status of this, but Dominion Power has a, by the mini substation and I've heard that they were going to abandon and not use it. So anyway, that could be something that maybe, you know, could, we could look at it as, as far as, um, s- space. And, uh, I, I just love the way that the narrative has been changed that, um, for LMA that people are trying to get in there, want to get in there. I mean, that is amazing. So, um, that is truly amazing. So, um, I, I think that, that it doesn't, it shows that you don't, doesn't take a long time to, to kind of change that narrative. If you change, you know, the focus and what you're doing. So, uh, I hope that that continues. And, um, as far as the, the transition, what I found is working with young people is, is that most of them are, you know, we hear about the high achievement, those might be getting in trouble, but most of them are right there in the middle. And so I think that maybe I, I forgot what the transition plan is from Buford to the high school. But maybe, um, that is something that, you know, we can look at again as a community, what, what are we doing to support those? You know, just like you're going to a lot bigger school now, it's not as much handholding, that type of thing. So, um, um, so that may help with reduce some of the students that, um, you know, that, you know, because you said most of the students are ninth and tenth grader. So I didn't realize that, that's, um, something I didn't know. And my last kind of comment or question is that, um, you may have said it, but I was probably taking notes. You said, um, what, what does DBT means?
Yes, and I wrote it down because I felt like that'd be a question. It's the, um, dialect, dialectical behavior therapy.
I know, I didn't hear that. No.
Kind of glossed over it hoping, but I was ready. So yes. And again, that's just addressing, um, students, uh, through like the mindful moments that Ms. Um, Phelps, our, our career counselor, um, will be doing problem solving, uh, and things. There's actually a curriculum that they have, um, that will funnel through that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, great work. Um, I'm really excited about this. Um, I think that, that, um, it's a great, you know, the way that, um, you, the entire school system just kind of rallied around the students and one another in the community to kind of, you know, address what was going on and to come up with this as a, you know, as one of the tools to address it. I know you're doing so many other things. It's amazing. So, um, man, this is, thank you all so much, you know, um.
And we are, in terms of funding the program of, you know, last school year, you know, we, this was in progress. We were working on this last year in preparation. This was actually supposed to be rolled out second semester. Um, it was of, so January twenty-four, jet, this month, um, we were supposed to roll this out. So we, um, had to accelerate this a little bit. Um, but you will see, um, more of an ask from us in our budget because we are going to, this will be all year, next school year. We are going to embed more programs and supports for our students, um, just to ensure that, uh, they are successful. Yep, this is currently some vacancy savings and some, and some other things to, um, to make it work, to get us to this. Any other questions for Mr. Trotter? All right, thank you. All right, um, so next on, um, our, um, next on our items for, uh, um, items for discussion, um, we have four point three, the preschool center. Um, we wanted to add this to, um, the agenda um, because I know we had a presentation last week, um, at our, um, at our school board meeting with regards to, um, the capital improvement plan. And so on that, I know, uh, Mr. Goddard had mentioned that the request, um, has been made, um, for the preschool center. And I think that request was like, um, year twenty-five, um, it was between year twenty-five and twenty-eight. Um, and so, um, I think the discussion this evening is just centered more around next steps and, uh, what do we need to do to get to, um, ensure that the preschool center happens? And, um, and so I don't know where you want to start in terms of that conversation.
Okay. Um, no, I just want to, I want to thank you and, and thank you, um, Mayor for, um, just providing some feedback about what you'd like to hear. But again, as Dr. Gurley stated, and I know that, that most of the current council, and then we've got, um, Natalie Ashrin, um, joining us. So had, I'm sure following along as far as the middle school reconfiguration and then preschool is, was going to dovetail into that. And I know that there was a lot of, um, discussion even last year as we were talking about budget and counselor Payne, you know, talking a little bit about CIP and, and just whether or not we could start to, um, hold a spot for some funding for the preschool. So I think this was just an opportunity and a desire for us to kind of again, follow up with that and begin to have some conversations um, with you all about where you're at and what your thoughts are, um, moving forward, um, with this budget and then with, with the CIP. It, yeah, and, and again, for clarification, it's not currently in that, correct? So I don't know if anybody, if that was a question or a clear enough question or, or where we, you know, where, what do we need to be doing at this point? I mean, we kind of had the preliminary, um, drawings and fun, you know, uh, dollar amount that, that came from, um, Mr. Knox and B M D O.
Yeah, I think that, um, if we had a CIP meeting last night, a joint meeting with the planning commission. And as I recall, didn't, this came up a little bit. We talked a little bit about this as, as well. And, um, it's just timing and, and, and money is, is that, as I recall, but, uh, maybe some of y'all can remember some of the more.
I, I may be totally off base here, but I have not seen an estimate or a proposal or anything coming out of whatever deliberations or meetings there may have been. And it hasn't gotten to the rest of council. So when I said last night, we ought to at least put a marker in the budget a couple of years down the road, I was saying that on the assumption, on the understanding that we didn't have a plan yet. Is there a plan?
Well, I think, I, you know, I think, um, parallel to the drawings and the, um, costs associated with, um, the middle school reconfiguration. They also had another group with B M D O who was working on, uh, the preschool center. So, so we did have both of those and both of those were presented to council. Um, but, you know, it was pretty clear that we needed to kind of focus on the middle school initially. But those were, um, part of that presentation. And I guess, Mr. Goddard, that's.
When was that?
Within the last couple of years.
Okay, I mean, nothing current.
Right.
Well, I don't know how current.
Well, I don't know either because I haven't seen anything in the last year, year and a half, two years.
Yeah, well, the focus, you know, has been on middle school. I mean, we made a decision based on what council's comfort level was and the finances that, that we needed to move forward with this and that preschool would be phased in at some point. And so maybe Mr. Goddard can be more clear.
If I, two things I'd like to do. Um, first is have Mike just set the table for where we, with what we understand the project to be. Let's do that first. That was what the conversation was at the, uh, school board meeting last week. And then I want Chrissy to frame, what do we see as the action steps for your consideration? The, the matter is that we need to have, um, direction from council in regards to placing, uh, Walker into the CIP. That is the expectation. I won't put it in unless you tell me to put it in. Um, the question is you telling me how much and helping us determine when. Uh, but Mike is going to frame what we know at this time as to what it costs. And then Chrissy will wrap up the grant aspect of it as well.
Thank you. So when we did the initial, uh, studies for both the middle school and the pre-K center, uh, we took both through conceptual design. So we do have conceptual design for the pre-K center. And those were presented, but it's been a while, so I'm happy to send those out, uh, in their, uh, in their current form. Uh, there was always the understanding we would have to take the next steps as far as bringing those to construction documentation at some point in the future. Um, but that's kind of where we left it and intentionally because you don't want to take a design past a certain point until you're ready to build the thing. But those are ready to go. Um, as far as the cost, uh, right now, I think our, our best estimate of cost for the, for the school be twenty-seven ish million dollars. So somewhere in the twenty-five to thirty million dollar range is what I would set aside for that project. Uh, and that's taken into account, um, reasonable cost escalation between now and when we kick the project off, which would be fiscal year twenty-seven.
Okay. I, I thought I recalled from prior discussions that the last numbers we were hearing were an estimate of around, around thirty million dollars. And that was a couple of years ago. And I, so that's why I was wondering about cost escalations and so on. So I, I like your numbers today better.
Well, um, we were, when those numbers were put together, we were experiencing double digit escalation. So, um, that could happen again. It could end up at thirty million. I never love saying smaller numbers because you know how things work in construction, but, um, but I'm trying to also keep a little downward pressure on my team so that we don't get wild.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Goddard, can you remind me where we are with the construction schedule and opening and commissioning and all of that for Buford? Because one of the things that would be helpful for me to know, this, this touches on the construction side and then also on the operational side, sort of, you know, the, the various moving pieces that have to happen with, because students are going back down to the elementary schools and, and all of those things. In my mind, it sounds like there's some money that would need to be spent to, to affect that. And then, you know, subsequent to that, I don't know if it's a year, two years, three years, four years, the, the actual Walker piece happening. How, how would you sort of lay it out logistically and a- as you're thinking, and maybe some folks from the schools can answer that as well. In an ideal, since if money were no object, which is, that's, you know, never the case. But if, if we could do this the way people wanted it to happen, what would be sort of some parameters?
Okay, that's a lot. And I, um, I hesitate to spit out all those answers without some of my documents in front of me because I like to have paper. But the understanding is that the, first of all, uh, I think your first question was how are we doing on schedule? We've run into some hiccups, but nothing serious. We're working with the contractor, a lot of stone in the ground over there. Uh, it's cost us some money and some time, but we're trying to put some pressure to keep that, uh, moving and get it back on time. I think it's doable or at least close to doable. We have a little bit of float, so I think we'll be okay. I don't see any, uh, timeline issues.
Remind me when that was supposed to be done?
So the, uh, the first building will be complete, uh, not this coming summer, but the summer after.
Okay.
And that's, so then everybody moves over into that building. Uh, and then the next year, we spend renovating the existing building and making major renovations to the auditorium building.
Got it.
And, and we have different designations for the zones and the spaces, but I'm trying to keep it, uh, in, in lay terms. So that's the plan.
So that takes you to when, to the end of?
Mike, it's twenty-six, twenty-seven for when we're scheduled to, for the new construction and the renovation to be completed. All goes as planned. Uh, we start in the fall, August of twenty-twenty-six. We are moved, the, the project is done.
Right.
August twenty-twenty-six.
So, um, our request in fiscal year twenty-seven is what we put in, uh, what we submitted on behalf of the school board. That would be basically us pulling our construction stuff off the field and starting into, um, schematic design and on down the line, uh, to construction documentation to get it built right after. And in a perfect world, we could sort of overlap the design phase with the tail end of the construction phase.
Right.
But my office can't manage those two very large projects at the same time, along with all the other things that we're doing.
And what about the piece of when the students are moving back into the elementary schools? Is that, Ms. Powell, is that part of your, the schedule you just mentioned, or is that a year after that?
Uh, yes. So, um, Dr. Gurley has assigned all of us different work with, um, you know, planning for that time. But basically the preschoolers come to this campus when the, for that twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, that's not optional because the fifth graders are going into the elementary spaces where the preschoolers are coming out. So. So the preschoolers are here, but this is not a preschool building. There is some funding in the middle school project to make this, you know, tenable for safety proofing.
It's actually coming from priority improvement.
Well, it's in the plan, but.
But we have a plan.
It's we have a plan. But yeah, it's nothing's in the Buford Middle School budget, but Buford Middle School, to be clear. But it was planned for in the CIP. And so there's no, they have to come here to make reconfigure it, to make this work. It's just this is not a space built for our youngest learners.
Understood. So twenty six, twenty seven.
On on that note, can you give a brief recap of the adjustments that need to be made to this building besides like tiny toilets and tiny water fountains?
Well, part of the process is actually not tiny toilets nor tiny water fountains. And this is, this actually took quite a bit of of work to figure out because this school, obviously, it it would cost a very large amount of money to do those kind of renovations. And when we talked to our architects about it, one of the things that quickly came up was, well, do you have a tiny toilet and a tiny water fountain at your house? No, so it's okay that we don't have those things in a shorter term kind of scenario. So that would be a phase down the road if this building were to be occupied long term. It it didn't make sense to us to spend all that infrastructure money when we're going to be building a a building right down the hill. What is involved is making appropriate playground accommodations because pre pre K students use very small outdoor spaces. So most of actually what we're planning is exterior to the school. And then there are some pathways and things that we have to make accessible for younger children, things like that. But for the most part, the interior of the school stays as is. It's the project's value is a million and a quarter, so it's really not. It's not a big lift for us.
And that money's already programmed.
Yeah, that's part so council, five or six years ago appropriated one point two five million dollar yearly lump sum for us to do modernizations at the elementary level. And we're using that for a couple of different other priority issues that have come up, including the C H S restrooms.
Thank you.
Or did you want to go first? I started, sorry, Chris Meyer. So I guess my my thinking is one of the things I want to avoid is I think what ended up happening with the the Buford project in terms of council had placed a placeholder that ended up not being that realistic of a number. And there wasn't clear alignment among everybody on expectations, which I think was a process that just didn't wasn't beneficial to anybody. And I think we don't need to repeat that. So one of the questions I had, which sounds like maybe you've answered, is one of my concerns is with that thirty million dollar number. How realistic is that currently in terms of when that was priced, the scope of it? And is there any additional work that we need to be done in terms of getting us a number that we feel we have ninety, ninety five percent confidence in that that's in kind of the ballpark of what we're?
I would say we're there.
Okay.
That so the earlier incident procedure, whatever you want to call it, lack thereof. It really was just kind of a shoot from the hip. You know, my office didn't do any work to provide any information on on the front end of that. It was just kind of like, I don't know, this is what a school could cost. Or here's some money. It was really just here's some money to get started. And we did, and it was, you know, more money than we needed for the first step, but not enough to get us much further than the first step. So we came back to council and council appropriated the money and and off we went. This is a very different procedure because part of that initial design push was to do a serious design first first design phase for both schools. And then once we got that back, we came to you all and asked for the Buford money, knowing that we couldn't do both at once, nor did anybody have, I think, the the tolerance for that. Certainly, I don't have the tolerance for that. But yeah, that's how it went down. So to answer your question succinctly, we're pretty good on the number. Now, it's a few years from now, the world does funny things, especially in the construction market. But, you know, assuming that things stay within the realm of normal, I think thirty million is approximately your number, give or take what happens in the world.
And so it sounds like in terms of anything placed into our CIP budget, that would be placement of a number in F Y twenty seven was.
Yeah, I think that was when the ask was for twenty seven.
So I guess in terms of our internal process, because my, I'm glad to hear that. My understanding had been that that thirty million dollar, there was much more uncertainty about that than it sounds like there is. But so I guess in terms of our process, I mean, it's really just slotting in that number in F Y twenty seven. And then the the finance team giving us council projections on what that's going to mean in terms of our debt payments and debt capacity as part of this budget cycle, I would presume. Because I think we, it would behoove us to start really seriously planning for what the the fiscal impact will be and how we're going to meet it as a city. Because I don't think this is a a project that we want to not not move forward on.
Just the naked counselors for it sounds like there's a lot of interest in this and I appreciate that. Mr. Gud, you you mentioned potentially staff capacity in order to not only see through and adequately manage the existing remodel that you're doing. I appreciate that, but also do all the design work, et cetera. Do we need to also put that into then? How much does that cost to get you that extra capacity to be able to, again, do these things concurrently, the design and 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 the build?
That's a complex question. And and it's not as simple as, well, I need one person or two people to do it. It's it also has to do with the structure of my team and the staff and and all of these sorts of things. So I can't give you just a off the cuff, here's what it would cost kind of number. You know, could we reconfigure the nature of the work we do? Sure. I would not want to do this kind of work with short term or temporary kind of employees or or to farm any of it out. It's too important for that. And we don't often operate in this space. So the the middle school project is a ninety million dollar project. That's three times bigger than anything that we've ever managed before. So could we ramp up to do a hundred and twenty ish million dollars worth of work at the same time, in addition of all our little stuff that we do? Yeah, we could. Do we want to stay at that kind of level strategically? No, I don't think so. But if you want to know the number, I I could put it together for you. Yeah.
Well, and thanks for that. I just colleagues on the council and the school board. I I think we've seen decades and you appreciate the recent councils efforts to help get the infrastructure up to speed and the Buford remodel, et cetera. But we've seen decades and decades of underinvestment in our school buildings. And I think, you know, we definitely needed a continued growing city. Obviously, it's not just going to be this Walker pre K, but we have growing capacity levels or capping out at at different elementary schools, et cetera. And we're going to need more infrastructure, remodel, infrastructure in the future. So I I hope we can also be thinking about, again, staff capacity beyond not only just this be Walker also. The remodel, that's going to be done. And and again, it sounds like you might need to make some investments in staff to be able to make that happen.
Basically, I agree with what Mr. Payne has just stated in terms of what I would like to see, Mr. Sanders, in terms of just what the numbers would look like, how this, you know, what are the same sort of thing we went through two years ago. I think, you know, we had to push a lot of things through a really sort of tiny, small period of of time to really work through what our options were. And I think when we did that, we were able to find, we we were able to make it work. And we can, you know, use our past experiences. And I know that Ms. Hamel now has practiced in pulling out those tables. And my own sense is that, you know, what you've mentioned in terms of your capacity and what it would take for the city to do this well. You know, that that may be longer, that that might be the more of the constraint than the money itself in terms of in terms of funding it through the CIP, but we'll see. Yeah, I'll just go ahead and put it out as far as far as this this person's vote. You know, I I want to see this happen. I'm committed to it. I think it's important. I I hope we can sort of, you know, get there in a in a in the less dramatic way than we had to last time. I agree with Mr. Meyer that, you know, we want to have excellent facilities. Obviously, we want to, we want to do them in a way that's cost efficient. But I don't think this is something we can kick down the road.
Yeah, so I know we are going to have another budget meeting and some, hopefully, some positive things just going down down in Richmond. I I hear we're like one of the nine, only nine states that kind of calculate how we get our funding, and that may change. We may, it's a lot more energy for the the one percent tax. We, you know, if, you know, some of these things may happen in the next year or or two that may help with this funding as well. But I do recall in the sixteen years I was on the school board that we had these conversations that Chris talked about that that the school system has been underfunded by, you know, the city, local government and and the state and the something that that, you know, we have done a great job and working with staff and the city and keeping our buildings looking great. You know, and they have always remained up to code and and been in great shape. But we really, you know, Buford would be new, but besides that, it's been nineteen seventy two, I think, that, you know, we've had a new building. And and so, but it looks like, you know, when we meet, I guess, in a few weeks and a few months to have a meeting specifically on a budget, we're probably going to get a little bit more in this. I know that Chrissy, you, we've been trying to say something, you want to come up?
So I feel like some of this is kind of starting with Buford all over again, quite honestly. Although we are in a a little bit of a different situation. So as you all know, as Mike alluded to earlier, when we started with Buford, we threw out fifty million dollars. And we said, hey, react to that. And we started there and we went from fifty million to ninety million is where we actually ended up. And that conversation went everywhere from we can't do it at all because fifty million is going to kill all our debt capacity to finally, yes, we have capacity to do this. And we upped to ninety because we expected to, the school board was applying for a grant, which we actually got. So all of this to say that we we put all of this in, but in spite of all that, we do still have a really aggressive CIP. With the current five year plan that we have, our debt service is increasing over a million dollars a year. With the current projects, we also have sort of keeping an eye on the big picture. Regionally, we have some multi big multimillion dollar projects that will be coming to council for input. And so we are in a different situation with Buford standing here tonight than we were when we passed the CIP. I think we originally contemplated that we were going to get seven million dollar grant reimbursement. We got a little over seventeen, right? And so those, and in addition, the school board had a surplus that has, they have contributed extra dollars to the CIP. All of this, we're going to be reworking those numbers coming back to council. Those dollars will be going to Buford because that's how the grant is approved. That will preserve bond bonding capacity for future projects, which could be Walker, could be other things. That's where council has to weigh that in. We also know that with changes at the state, there are going to be some pretty material operating increases from the school board as well. And so as we talk about paying debt service, capacity is not an issue right now. We can issue a lot of debt, but can we afford to pay for the debt? So I think all those things considered, you know, once we get a full picture and figure out all those pieces and parts to steal from Mr. Sanders, it's going to be a discipline and priorities situation in determining, you know, where do you want to put the dollars and how much do you want to allocate? So I don't know if that's not the story you want to hear, but that's sort of keeping the eye on the big picture. And Sam, I don't know if you have more you want to add.
Yeah, so I want to make it clear because I don't want anyone to say anything that I did not say. There is no opposition to Walker, none whatsoever. It's when? That's the question. The question to me really is when? What we need to try to figure out and what you all as council have to do with our help is to make some decisions. You right now also have J M R L under consideration. Twenty seven is the year that we've identified. Are we going to be able to get the library renovation in at the same time that we're putting in this big item? That's a question. That's a decision. We also have a huge change coming with collective bargaining. We have another huge change simultaneously coming with comp and class implementation. Those aren't CIP related, but that's how you pay your debt capacity. Your debt service is how much of that money are you going to earmark in those categories? So it is, we're in a very sobering moment. I'm not doom and gloom. I'm not a doom and gloom person. We're going to figure it out. The question is, how do we figure it out? And some things may have to wait. I'm not suggesting that this is the thing that has to wait, but you're going to have to reconcile some things because it's not all going to fit at the same time. So our responsibility is to bring you as much of the information as we possibly can, make it as clear as we can possibly make it. The intention is that your work session on the fifth is really where we would have some clarity and some additional details on where we see the struggle. And then you will begin your deliberation of making some of those other decisions that you have to make as well.
Yeah, and I think one of the things I would be interested to have part of our discussion at council work sessions, this budget cycle is looking at what are those larger CIP projects that are not yet in the CIP, listing those out? So as council, we can prioritize where we place each one of those and then be able to look through scenarios of which ones, you know, we put into the CIP. What's the dollar amount yearly in terms of the increase in our debt service? And and also have numbers of our our general fund growth, I don't know, ten year average, what that has actually been. Because I appreciate, like, when we did Buford, I I I think we should have very conservative projections because it's much better to have projected you can have less money than you end up having rather than than the reverse. But I remember throughout that process, you know, our understanding was that was taking on that debt capacity would be something under those assumptions that would require a ten cent increase in the real estate, real estate tax rate or an equivalent. And then when we looked at what the actual revenue growth was, that wasn't the situation. And I just want to make sure that we're not being overly optimistic, but we're looking at what is our general fund growth like realistically been on a ten fifteen year time horizon? Just so we're not cutting off projects that it turns out we did have the fiscal capacity for. But whatever all those specific numbers are, I'd just be interested in looking at as well as what are those big projects? The central library is one. I know there's there's housing priorities. I'm sure there's transportation priorities as well. But just, I don't think we've listed all those out and and ranked them ourselves as council, but. Yeah, Michael, I I recall last year or, you know, when we 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 as council and with staff really kind of squirreled down and and almost went project by project and say, are we, are we still doing this? And maybe some of it would be done with the V dot grant. And, you know, it, so I think a lot of that, you know, some of those projects, we have already kind of fleshed out. But I think we're going to have to do it again. So I I think it's, it is, you know, it's going to come down to the five of us just making some decisions on what we see as a priority. And I know several of us today, it was council, we got emails on the sidewalk improvements, on land trust. And and we constantly get it on the transit, you know, making everything electric. So all these things cost money. And so we're just going to have to make some tough decisions because as much energy and passion we get from the edu educators and parents, we get it from the other, you know, parts of the community. And that's fine. We want to hear from individuals, but we're just going to have to make a decision. And we have to factor in, we can't, you know, just keep raising taxes because people can't afford to pay it. So anyway, we we would do what we.
So in a way, we, we would do what we, what is right for the community. And meetings like this is vital to do that. And so.
Mr. Wade, can I?
Yeah.
So Ms. Hamel, I think you alluded to this and Mr. Wade, you talked about some news coming out of Richmond. And we didn't have the slides that we received last week about the local composite index and our projected funding from the state as part of this. And I'm not sure if council is interested in hearing those numbers at this meeting or if that's for our next one. But I don't know if we have those slides that we can share. If that's an appropriate time to talk about that because we, you know, it's not just the capital improvement plans that we're going to be needing funding for. The state funding is a concern for us as well.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would definitely suggest that we do it at the next meeting. I've been through those composite index things before. Isn't that something I want to deal with at six thirty at night?
Maybe not one like this one.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the, without getting into the details, Ms. Dooly, is it, is it bad news?
It is not favorable. So I mean, it's based on attendance from COVID years. And so they are basing our funding on enrollment data when, of course, we had fewer students. There were fewer students across the board. And so unless, I don't know, Ms. Hoover's probably over there like, stop talking, but.
Well, and it's not just about enrollment, if I may. It's about every, it's about how the revenues of the locality are moving. That's also a huge driver. It's, it's, LCI stands for local composite index of ability to pay. And they basically assess how the locally generated rate of revenues are moving, how income levels are moving for the residents of the locality. And then, yes, how the population is moving both overall and with regard to students. And they compare those, how those things are moving in direction, in relation to every other locality in the state. And so every time they readjust the LCI, they are, there are winners and losers. And we are one of the biggest losers in the state in this round with regard to not just the enrollment piece, but also how revenues moved for the locality and perceived income levels, perceived wealth of the locality in relation to every other locality in the state.
Which is related to, in, you know, large real estate assessment increases as well as, you know, those economically sensitive revenues that we talk about, sales, meals, lodging, expendable income. And they have continued to rise. And so that all gets factored into affordability.
I see.
Sorry, real quick, Mike, we, we, last week, so don't run away too quick there. We did talk about, and I saw in the CIP, sorry, roof replacements, looking out and trying to find solutions on where we can find some more money. I know there's potential opportunities to do a couple of things around rooftop solar while also redoing your roof at the same time and packaging that into power purchase agreements. Is it possible that staff could look into that as another solution to, again, reduce that potential CIP budget and do a couple of different things at the same time?
We, we are always doing that, yeah. The, as I mentioned at our last meeting, Crystal's working on some power purchase agreement background stuff. We're working through the attorney's office right now to, to see what options we have. We're also, you know, we have to talk about what is the most fiscally responsible way to take advantage of solar. But that's a whole other story. But yes, we're always trying to find ways to pay for solar arrays, not out of pocket. There are some options for rolling in roofs with solar arrays. Typically, they're not going to pay for a whole lot of your roof, so you end up paying for most of the roof, at least in the few studies that we've done. But yeah, it is something we're, we're looking into and working with the Office of Sustainability on.
We also get a sharp financial advisor firm. They're looking into the tax credit programs. So we, we are covering that as well.
So I, I do want to, you know, just express my gratitude for council and the work that we've all done, you know, through the middle school reconfiguration. I mean, that was a lot of work and we, we all know that. We had a lot of meetings. So just that process, I know, and I, I, I hear Ms. Hamel saying this is very different. I did want to just pivot back to the, the preschool. Just the vision that we had and, and nothing is set in stone yet. But when we kind of presented this, we keep saying preschool or pre K center, but there were, it was a lot more than that. And I don't know what it's going to be, but we, we did. And I don't know, Ms. Powell, if you feel comfortable kind of talking about some of the wraparound services. And some of these services that I feel lend really well and, and are very similar to what we were trying to do or are trying to do through the night school and, and LMA. So I think there's a lot of potential also built into what this pre K center and space could be.
Yes, one thing actually, as you were speaking, Ms. Torres, that remind me, so this reconfiguration is actually tied, it's, it's of course related to the move at Buford, which has a lovely family support area, which I was looking at today on the plans. The design that goes into the pre K center will also include that same type of area to provide, you know, not just serving the, our youngest learners, but also serving their families. But the move to build that preschool center will then free up this building where the preschoolers will be, for lack of a better term, camping out in conditions that we just make safe enough for them to be here. When this building is freed up, that gives us a lot of options for what's next. And I certainly cannot say exactly what that will be. But one of those options could be for us to take what's now the division administration annex in the lower level of CHS, get it over here with our little brick box, the division administration office, and kind of consolidate those functions here, freeing up the lower level of CHS for expansion of programs like the night school that you heard about this evening. I am not saying that's what will happen. Who knows what may need to happen with this building? But the good news is in a ten-square-mile area that's, has us pretty landlocked, you have some options between this real estate and then the K-Tech property that was just purchased as well. But, you know, when you want to think really big picture, those are the kind of things that we sometimes bat around and dream about.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
No, I don't think this has been very helpful.
Yeah, and again, I want to, I want to thank you for giving us a couple of things that you wanted to get updates on. This was kind of a unique opportunity in the sense that it's kind of an extra meeting as we're all getting ready to dive into budgets. But a wonderful opportunity to bring the current council and, and the current school board together to kind of have some preliminary talks and get some things percolating in our brains before we really do some of the harder work. And I look forward to meeting with you all again soon after we receive the superintendent's proposed budget so that we can bring that to you and, and continue our talks. And as always, if there's anything that you all need from us, you know where to reach us and we appreciate all that you all do for us. So thank you. I don't, I think if we had, and I don't know if we have anybody, Mr. Comore, if we're looking for anybody on Zoom, if anybody would like to make public comment. Nobody there. And I don't know that if there's anybody here. But we did have that slotted for that. But otherwise, I want to thank you all and I look forward to seeing you all again and we'll adjourn the meeting.